Much to your enjoyment, I won't take the whole 18 minutes. I want to thank especially Ms. Baca and Bernard for giving me this opportunity, not only myself, but to show the public how this stuff really should work. Again, I encourage people to look at and see the process. But on this mayor's responsibilities, had we been following the procedures correctly, we wouldn't be in this condition. I agree with the recommendations, and I've said so many times, and I've said that whole deal, and I'm going to agree with the mayor. It should be, it should, any item should be put on the agenda by any council member and seconded by another member. I want to hear, I want my representative to have the ability to have the debate and discussion. To get shot down, as Mr. Delgado said, that's, you know, like with the Mayor Pro Tem, that's the way it is. But that's what we should be doing. That's the process. We should have these things come each time, and we should have these discussions, and we can have a much civil discussion on this stuff if we do this. And this does give me hope for what's happening today. You're finally seeing the process of how it should work. I hope we will continue this in the future because I want to hear everybody's thoughts on this. That's how we get the best. I want to say, and I said on the Mayor Pro Tem part, I agree with Mr. Delgado's comments. In the end, you know, this is not a life or death situation. It is. I mean, I say, and again, just taking from that, and I said it the last time, I mean, my preference, or if I was throwing it up there, I think, I like the rotation idea of whoever's not had it has, I don't say it has to be mandatory, but they should be given priority. If they decide they don't want to do it, you know, then it can go down the line and like this, if the other three decided they don't want to do it, and Ed's on there, you know, go for it. That's fine and dandy. So, I want to go to that. The other reports, and I will just say like this, and more of that, and if you want to go back to the model of how this stuff works on the study sessions, you just have to go back to how Tom Owens did it. He opened this session up. He opened these study sessions up. He actually is the first person, after many, many decades of us fighting for it, he got the study sessions televised. Transparency. A lot of people talk about it. He walked the walk. He allowed us to comment at a study session on non-agenda items. This is how we start the discussion on this. This is how we do it, and like I've said, I think we should really go back to the two, especially with all this stuff going on, we should go back to the two study sessions a month. And then, again, I will put some of the proposals that, of you two that have been on that council for six years, and you've seen the paperwork that I've submitted to this council. Again, the other three, you know, they haven't seen it, but you did. You know it. You know how to put this stuff together, or a proposal too of doing it, and you never once put it forward, or put it to a vote, or even discussed it. So don't talk about X, Y, and Z, or this, or that, or this, or doing that. You want to have an honest discussion about this stuff? Let's do it. And again, like I've said, and this is a proposal I put together, and I said, in of this stuff, why I said to go into two study sessions, eliminate these public safety committees and that, let's put them on study sessions. Let's put everybody, I want to hear all of your opinions on these. As we move it forward, we can have these discussions at a study session. So, when we get to the council meeting, we have a lot of the reports done, a lot of the stats, you have information, even have, all of you have time to think about it and discuss it, and the public does. So maybe we will have more efficiently run meetings when we come to the time to make the decision, and we're not here till 2:00 in the morning, like we have done in the past. Ms. Baca will remember those days very well of that. But that's what I'm saying, is let's put this stuff together. Let's do this. And again, like what we're doing on this, we should end a study session on this. And I'm not criticizing anything that's coming, but this is just my suggestion, and we've said it before, is have the report, have this, I want to hear the staff report. I don't want to come up here and give my public comments first, then they might have given me information that already answered my question, so we're duplicating things. It's how we make these meetings run efficiently, and effectively, and very simply. That's how we do this stuff. That's how we can change the image of this city, is if we take this and we say, you know, we're going to take the best, we're going to put it out there, we're going to put these stuff in the order we have, and we're going to turn this reputation around that we've had. We're going to allow people, and we're going to show, this is how you do public policy right. Majority rules. That's how it is. That's how you got elected. That's how this board makes decisions, is three votes. And I've said this many times, I am comfortable with any decision this board or any government agency makes, as long as they're making it unclear and accurate information, and all of it. We all win some and lose some in the political process, and in the end of the day, after that's done, we go fight the next battle. This is what, and this is the kinds of discussions I'm talking about. It's just like that. And I've come up here and said it, like with the Mayor Pro Tem thing. I didn't agree with, you know, if somebody else wants to have that representation on there or that, I think it should be, because at the end of the day, as Mr. Delgado said, what difference does it make who it is? And I think everybody's district should have that opportunity to have their person in that position. It's not about personalities or that, or, you know, I might disagree with the person that gets in there, but hey, that's, the people of that district elected them, and just like I talked about on the agenda, you have, I don't want, I want, in fact, I think we should fight the hardest for the minority opinion. Because in a lot of cases, that becomes the majority. Sometimes we look at this stuff or that, or everybody, you know, if you guys agreed that you were going to arrest and imprison everybody named Roy for 10 years, I would have a problem with that, and I would be protesting that, of that. See what, I hope that kind of clicks, in what I'm talking about. It's that minority position, yeah, there might be, and I'm sure there probably are. They'd like to silence Roy. And I'm sure a lot of people would agree with that. But that's not right. We know that, that's against every principle we stand for. But that's what I'm saying. And I'm going to end with this. Why I'm saying that, because one person in the city stood for that minority right. And that was just as Ms. Baca said, where me and Ms. Palomares came from, Moreno Valley Unified School District. They arrested her mother for exercising her constitutional right to redress her government and free political speech. And it was proven in court that they violated her rights. And that's why I believe we should defend the minority opinion in all cases, and hear that. We might not agree with it, might not win, but in many cases, and we can cite them through history, the world has changed because somebody stood up. Somebody stood their ground, and no matter what was going wrong, or how much, or what the odds were, they stood for what was right. And I hope in the end, that's where we all, what we will all do. Again, I want to thank Ms. Bernard and Ms. Baca for giving me this chance, and for yielding your time. I hope, maybe it's a little bit of inspiration, that things will change.
The next speaker is Donovan Sadiq on Items A1 and A2.
Good evening, council, staff. I hate following behind Roy and Louise and all those other people, because they say everything that I wanted to say. But thank you again, Baca Santa Cruz, for the community outreach that you did last week, or was it this week? Yeah, that was last week. And one of the reasons I came here also was to hear the police department presentation that he said he was going to do today, and I'm sure he's going to do it. But just like Roy said, it would be great to have comments a little bit back or before, so that, I don't want to repeat something that he might have said or disagree with, or not have enough information. But in regards to this study session, the proposed changes to the mayor duties, I think it's correct. I think that's the thing to do, that, you know, every time a new administration comes in, what happens in our federal government when a new president comes in? They reverse everything the previous person did by executive order, by executive order. And that's just how democracy works. It's ugly, it's not great. I know it takes a lot of power away from you, mayor, but, you know, sometimes you've got to give to get a little bit, you know? You know, you're not going to get 100% of everything. So I think the proposed changes should be something that should be codified into our city aspect, to see if the new administration comes in and they just want to, hey, we want to get rid of this, we want to get rid of that, because this is not a dictatorship. At the end of the day, one of the biggest problems, before I got involved with politics here locally, was you have these random groups that fight for power, and they just fight, and they fight for power, you know, and once one group gets it, then they stick it to the other group, and then the other group gets it, when they get their chance, and you stick it to the other group. That's why the United States is one of the most violent countries in the world. But anyway, again, you know, so I think that that should be codified to where any new person comes in, they can do that. The review of this selecting of the Mayor Pro Tem, I agree with Councilman Delgado, you know, it's purely ceremonial. I prefer the old way of the rotation, just who's ever there, and just rotate it in, and hey, you know, so-and-so's been on the council for six years, give him, you know, give him a chance, let him, you know, have a little glory here and there. But I don't want to take up too much time. Again, thank you, Councilman Bernard, and for yielding your time. And this is something that we got to start doing, mayor. I know there's some, some issues with people, and, you know, you might have to stick it to them or whatever, but you really don't have to. You know, you got to reach out and lead, and, you know, and I'm not trying to lecture you, but you got to put that branch out, a leader, a good leader. And Ed Delgado will tell you, you bring the factions together, and that signifies a good leader. When you can do that, you're on your way. Thank you.
The final speaker is Louise Palomares on A1.
I remember when this came up, and they turned it into a study session. Okay, great. I'm glad we're here today. I thought there would be a lot more speakers. I was at the school board trying to run over here, get over here, talk about this. Thank you, council members, for letting us speak, because it went by quick. So anyway, saying all that, anyway, as far as Ulysses Cabrera, you know, how many meritorial duties was there? I think 48, something like that? And the council members made it clear that we want some, you know, equity in our, in our say-so in our districts. Ed said it, Elena Baca Santa Cruz, Mrs. Bernard said it, and it's true. You know, you should have some input, you should have some say-so. And I know the, the mayor's been saying, well, it wasn't like this yesterday, and it was, but it isn't, we're not in yesterday. We're here today with a whole new council almost, except for David Marcus here in Cabrera that been here for six years later. Do your homework, you know? So I think it's too much power for one man, because we don't need a dictatorship. We don't need a dictatorship. We don't need a Caesar. We don't need a, we, we need fair, fair. Fair which for the people, the right for the people, the people's rights, you know? And I've heard it say, oh, well, that's not fair because of this, and it wasn't fair because of that. But when we talk about fair, it reminds me of when we were in school, little Johnny, let Paul play with that ball now, let him have his turn. We're not in grammar school. It wasn't fair. It wasn't fair that Ulysses Cabrera violated the Brown Act. We all got screwed. It wasn't fair that DA had to come down here and slap us into reality. It wasn't fair that, you know, if we want to talk about fair, was it fair to us, all the way from up north to down south, for people to be talking about? Fair? Was it fair to us that David Marcus said, what about the Brown Act? It don't matter? At the last council meeting, oh, all this, you know, democracy, it's a bunch of BS. Come on. No, no. We don't have to give this man too much power. You know, and I know these council members are in the dirt, they're making things happen, they're on the ground, they're running, they want the right things for their district. And how could just one man make decision for the whole city? Okay, it wasn't fair, it wasn't like, but it is like that today and now, and like Elena says, and Ed Delgado says, and Mrs. Bernard said, we're changing the page, we're turning the page here. This is your agenda, exit, I mean, thinking of Dr. Gutierrez, so sorry, I do that a lot. This is your agenda, Ulysses. This is, this is what you wanted to do. You wanted a new day. Well, hey, it's a new day. Let's go for, let's make the right things happen for the right reasons. Thank you. I guess I'm going to go on the second one now. I think I wanted to talk on the Mayor Pro Tem thing. I put in a, maybe I wrote it wrong.
And just for clarification, what other items will Ms. Palomares be speaking on?
A2.
Okay.
Eighteen.
Go right ahead and.
Okay, A2. Now.
If we could put the clock, there you go.
Okay. Everybody has to have a turn. Give me a break. I don't think so. The Mayor Pro Tem brings some integrity to the seat. Integrity, not violations by the Brown Act. I can't, I can't even think of David Marcus being on there. There's so many things he's done. He's been obstruction, he's been in campaign, you know, on the campaign trail with, you know, the Cory Jackson people and the mayor, you know, K-9 Cory. Come on. These are these people that are supporting that agenda. Our mayor is supporting that agenda. So as far as the Mayor Pro Tem, he has to be a man of integrity. Oh, let's everybody get a turn, let's pull straws. Give me a break. Where's the integrity? When the DA has to come down and tell him, you know, or else, we're going to sue the city of Moreno Valley, or else. Where's the integrity in that? Where's the right in that? Where is it? I want to know. Tell me. Uh-uh. You know, it's a shame and an embarrassment to our city if this guy gets in, because everybody's got to get a turn. It's fair? No. It isn't fair what happened. It isn't fair that we were violated, he violated the Brown Act, Dr. David Marcus, along with our mayor. It isn't fair that the DA had to come and tell us something. That isn't fair. So I can't understand why we got to give this man a turn. Anybody else, anybody else, but not him, because he has been obstructionist in city, an embarrassment to the city, violated the Brown Act, the DA investigated by the DA, falsified police reports? Come on. Been an obstructionist in our city, along with his people? And he knows who they are. I'm not going to say they know who they are. Involved with the Cory Jackson bandwagon? You know, that wants to take away our Canines.
Try to keep it to the Mayor Pro Tem topic.
Does that count for anything? Ulysses Cabrera, our mayor? What is, I mean, let's, let's give him a turn before he leaves in the next two years? Oh, it's fair? Uh-uh. What is fair? It's not fair when you, Mayor Cabrera, were walking out Mrs. Baca's stuff the day of her funeral in the hallways? Is that fair to our community? And you and Marcus all together, together, on all that one?
Let's keep it on the Mayor Pro Tem topic, please.
So the Mayor Pro Tem, I don't think so. I hope, and I pray they don't give him a turn for what? To embarrass, humiliate, and degrade us again? You know, because he's the next up for the, the seat there? Mayor Pro Tem? We need people of integrity. Elena Baca Santa Cruz, Ed Delgado, Shalinda Bernard. Yes, we need people of integrity and know what the hell they're doing, because he don't even got a clue, he don't even show up to the meetings. A lot of the, the boards and commissions, thank you.
I have a number of concerns about this item coming up. We have an office of directly elected mayor. I believe a large reason that this item is up tonight is because some of the councils simply just have personal dislike for who won the November election. And I didn't vote for Ulysses Cabrera in November, so that's not a personal sake while I'm here. It's really interesting how we had to endure six, seven years of Yextian Gutierrez on the council, acting very unethically, and intentionally not doing things with the responsibilities we're discussing, like boards and commissions, intentionally not interviewing people for years, appointing people that were volunteers in his campaign, donors of his. And it's interesting, three months into the term of a new mayor, a mayor you all know I have not always agreed with, plenty of times, I've had the ACLU involved, some instances with the city. Why are we, suddenly, last year you all voted to keep the powers of the mayor as they were, when you had Yextian here, with someone that you liked. But when you don't, with Jaime Hurtado not being elected, suddenly that shifts, and literally anyone else, I think, besides Jaime Hurtado being elected mayor, this would be now in play. I have a lot of concerns about the power. I mean, if you don't want a citywide mayor, do like Menifee, put the item on the ballot, have the voters get rid of it. You can do that in 2024, put a special election item. Boards and commissions, I have lots of concerns with, especially after I went to the Arts Commission meeting. I had participated in Arts Fest, it was a successful event, but you know, most of those boards and commissions do not have vacancies filled, they have not for years. Yextian did that on purpose, because he did not want the public participating. It was simply that. I really think at this point, you don't have very many people volunteering for them, no matter what district they're in. That justification last week was total nonsense. Three of you just don't want Ulysses to appoint people, it's that simple. You would rather, no problem if Jaime Hurtado was here. But those boards rarely have quorum. The times they do meet, they'd get very little done, in my opinion, and I've been part of several of them for years, the Historic Preservation Board, I was around a little bit when the Arts Commission ran the Vanguard Art Gallery, which went out of business. There was a lot of questionable use with taxpayer funds by the individual that was running that. At this point, you get very few applications from anybody in any part of the city. It's really my opinion, you should look at the legal requirements, because I think you have to keep the planning commission. I really just think as a city, you should dissolve and eliminate every single board and commission at this point, because this becomes a distraction, a ping pong ball, political item. You know, the city council really does very little in itself to appoint people or recommend people. The city spends a lot of resources on this item, and we get little for nothing in response to it. What happened last week was purely political. I mean, whoever, the idea of District One, you could have said boo, and three of you would have voted it, just because it's Ulysses. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
And did you have a second item that you wanted to speak on as well?
A4, yeah.
Item A4. Can we go ahead and take that comment now as well? If that's okay with staff? Okay. Go right ahead, Mr. Corn.
All right. So one of my concerns is about the capital improvements plan, is we're not distributing our resources equally with infrastructure. Moreno Beach Drive, that interchange has been taking many years to be fully constructed. It's been under construction for what, like five years? But when we had Theodore Street or World District Center Parkway, that interchange being done, that was studied five, six times with our resources of the public. It's really interesting how inequitable things are, but when the places that the city actually needs to commute, Moreno Beach Drive, I have a lot of questions about the interchange or Redlands Boulevard, because it's been studied, but it has no actual blueprints or plans or schematics created at this point, and yet it's used like 12 times more with capacity than Theodore Street is, or Gilman Springs Road is. So my, my question about this is, where are we as a city looking at that corridor finally being developed? You have Prologis now fully developed there, you have Aldi expanding, you have the Skechers Building nearing completion. Why is it not yet ready, or being close to construction phase yet? So I'm really concerned and interested in that. I also have a lot of concerns throughout the community that there are not enough sidewalks in certain areas, and a lot of roads that could not be paved. I have been impressed with Alessandra Boulevard down by Gilman Springs Road. I am glad to see that finally paved in some other places. So there is some positive feedback from me on this item, that I'm glad to see finally being done. But some of these elements take years and years and years to get done, but you have the funding for them. But for political reasons, sometimes who donates to your campaigns, particularly certain property owners on the eastern side of the city, certain projects that we need now have not been taken care of. So I really think that there needs to be a lot more focus in the general plan on Redlands Boulevard in particular, and a number of places that don't have sidewalks. I mean, there's a lot of high schools that are connected in this community where the teenagers have to walk. They have to walk through the dirt, through the mud. For years it took just to get a sidewalk near the county hospital built, because the city did years and years to do it. So I'm really looking to see some amendments done to this plan, that you improve that. And there's a lot of infrastructure that's being neglected. I would just say like potholes, especially after the latest rainstorms we've been having, that I think a little bit, a little bit more faster response time. So I have a lot of different concerns about that. I'll elaborate more in an email, but that's a little bit I have. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Palomares on A1 and A2.
Good evening, council chiefs. Thank you. On A1, the mayoral duties, I think if you review, and this is nothing personal, Cabrera's background, and he failed, period, to have control of all the duties that are, were their previous, when Mayor Gutierrez was there. And there's a whole bunch of them. I've got a list here of, from the beginning till, you know, he's, till, I think maybe even the last council meeting, when, you know, he's raised concern about the choice of people on committees or boards, whatever, and then he does the exact opposite of what he protested against, of him or anyone selecting their people. That's what he did. Now, I know he says, ah, they all showed up, and everyone that filed to get on one of those boards or commissions was selected, nobody was left off. Well, yeah, those are all, and great people, but the majority of them were all handpicked by him. You know, so you can't have it both ways. You know, he puts, no, let's not do that anymore, the way they used to do it. And he acts like it was a free, open market, you know, saying, well, District One didn't go out there and try to get anybody in, or this, or that. What I'm trying to say is, I think we should leave it up to the entire board, not just the mayor, you know, on picking people for the boards and commissions. But as far as his duties, you have to earn that. You know, he got censured. You know, I think you, for other council members that are up there, can make the right decision regarding this, where, you know, can you trust him? Because his track record isn't very good. And, you know, it's, it should be an honor, not a right to do it, to be on there. So, thank you.
Tom Gerald Sr. on A1 and A2.
Before we start the clock, I just have a quick question. Do I get three minutes for each item?
That is correct.
Okay. That's why I inferred it.
Yeah. And if you don't mind, could we restart the clock, just back to three minutes? Thank you.
Tom Gerald Sr. speaking on behalf of myself, and Mayor, Mayor Cabrera, Mayor Pro Tem Delgado, council members, members of staff and the public. Tom Gerald again speaking on behalf of myself. Thank you for the opportunity to do this, good thing. You know, one of the things of being the, maybe not the oldest in the room, but somebody's been around a while, right from my very first meeting, this issue of the, how we pick, particularly planning commission appointments, and the committee members. Candidly, when I, I was always, right out of the gate, in favor of a popular elected mayor, we actually discussed that way back in the, before we incorporated, whether we're going to have it or not. we're going to have it or not, but with the general law of city, the rotation system. And, I mean, almost within two, three years, it was a big public demand. Past councils laughed at it, said, no, it's not important. And then they ran a poll, and it was like 65, almost 70% popularity. So a couple of years later, we had the election, got on our way. But somewhere in that program, they came up with this idea of the mayor having the amount of power that they have, and with this slate. And candidly, I didn't like it, I almost didn't vote for it when I came up with it. But then I thought, you know, politics is a step-by-step business. And even though I would like to have done everything at one time, I didn't like that program. And I didn't like merits in having that much say-so. Not anything personal, but, you know, I just didn't like that much concentration of power. I have a mentor from Orange County, builder, developer, quality guy, but he does what we call infill construction, works in a lot of different cities. We were talking about our planning commission years ago, and he asked how we select. And before I could give my full answer, he said, well, he said, most cities, each council picks one, each council member picks one from their district, and they nominate, they have to be approved by the overall council, and if they fail, then they bring another one up, which I think is really smart, because I was shocked when I found out District One didn't have any representation. We desperately need that. And not just because I work in District One, but, you know, just called fairness, it's just simple, basic democracy. The other two, you know, can be picked at large. So that's what I'd like to see for that program. Now on, I don't know if we need to reset the clock, but on item A2, as far as the mayor pro tem, keep it simple, leave it as is, I don't see anything wrong with it. It's kind of an innocuous position, I mean, it's not, I mean, it carries a little bit of title, but it's not, no extra money. And, I mean, maybe they go to a few meetings and get a little stipend for that, but, you know, there's no big whoop to it. It's an honorarium, and I'm perfectly okay the way it is. And if I can just go back to why, like, I don't like the two-year term. Because basically, each mayor, whether it's you, or past mayor, or future mayor, we get one year service on, and they're back campaigning again. And that I don't think is good. One of the main reasons we wanted a popular elected mayor is continuity of mission, continuity of programs. And that's what a mayor can bring, and that's very, very important. So those are my reasons. So thank you for giving me the audience, appreciate your time. And kudos to our police and our fire and our public works, and doing a great job out there. Thank you.
The next speaker is Pete, and he's going to speak on A1.
Well, I want to talk about the duties of the mayor, what they do. I can tell you from my experience, you ain't the first mayor that had the venom of hate, like all the rest of them, that you're going to select your people. I've been thrown off by mayors that want to be just as dictatorial as anybody else. I think, I'm glad that at least one spoke up for District One. That's where I grew up, the red line of District One, which none of you know the history of, and where that red line is. But all you have to do is drive around there and see what old houses are there, you'll find it, it's still there, just like it was when I was in grade school. So, you know, if you guys want to do what you do, I think every one of you council are just as important as the mayor. And each one of you should go out and select, or try to find somebody from your district to at least represent you. Ray Tanner, which happened to be a mayor, was, after the first recall, was, put me on there, he was fifth grade teacher, me and him, and when I was in grade school, he tried to teach me education by the Board of Education, and we didn't get along too well. He was more powerful than me, but that's just the way it is. But if you don't like my attitude, blame Ray Tanner, because he uses board real well. So, you know, it's kind of the way it is. So, mayor, you ain't no different than the last ones that were up there. Some were good, but there was a lot of dictators just like you, just like the last one before you, and some before that. You're not old enough to know what the hell I'm talking about, but you know, there, you ain't the first. And I don't appreciate the way you do things, and to belittle your other colleagues up there for what you did to them, I mean, and make everybody listen to that, that's a bunch of bull, you know? You weren't part of God, although you think you are, and some of the people that got up here that know you all your life tell you you are, but you're not. You're only going to be there, you might be only there two years, but the most you can be there is four years, and that's it, you're out of here. The door stays left. So that's kind of the way it is. And Elena, did you learn any history about the building you were in?
And the final speaker, Bob Palomares for A2.
When I grew up, I want to be just like Pete. What I wanted to say on A2 about, my only thought is, why don't we keep it two years like the mayor? This way you don't have to worry about it every year, or whatever, 11 months, or, you keep it for two years, and when the next mayor, or whoever runs and is elected, you start over. But I think, you know, this way you just forget the middle portion of time. That's all, thank you.
That concludes public comment, mayor.